Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Common Council of Richmond, Indiana for November the 17th meeting. Would everyone please stand for Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the prayer by Counselor Burkhart?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, I thank you for this day. I thank you that we are all here gathering in hopes to make decisions not for ourselves, but for the city of Richmond. I pray for all those that are struggling tonight, that are hungry, that are homeless. And God, I just pray that you give us the wisdom to make the right decisions to move the city of Richmond forward. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Burkhart. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Doug Goss.
Here.
Lucinda Wright.
Present.
Bill Engel.
Here.
Larry Parker.
Here.
Ann Taylor.
Here.
Gary Turner.
Here.
Jane Bumbleau.
Here.
Justin Burkhart.
Here.
Jerry Purcell.
Here.
All are present.
Thank you very much. Approval of the minutes of our regular meeting, which was held on October the 3rd, and the special meeting of November the 3rd.
October the 30th.
October and November.
Yeah.
Mr. President.
Mr. Purcell.
If there's no amendments or changes, I move that we accept as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and second to approve the minutes as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Presentation of petitions, memorials? We have none at this time. Resolution number seven.
Resolution approving the update to the comprehensive plan.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Purvis, the Planning Director is not able to be here tonight, so we've asked Lindsay Darnell, the Community Development Coordinator, to read you his memo. She's the one that coordinated all the meetings and all the sessions for this project.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. Mr. President.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Resolution number seven dash 2025 is a request to approve an update to the city of Richmond's comprehensive plan. This plan builds on and updates the Richmond Rising Comprehensive Plan from 2019 that was adopted as resolution number one dash 2020. As part of this update, HWC Engineering drew upon data and input from prior initiatives, including the East Central Indiana Regional Development Plan from 2023, the Wayne County Foundation Gift Eight Plan of 2023, and the Whitewater Gorge Activation Plan of 2024. Additionally, they worked closely with a steering committee of city staff, elected officials, and members of the public, conducted two stakeholder meetings, and held a public workshop to determine which goals and priorities from the 2019 plan have been achieved, which are no longer relevant and what might be added. The draft that is before council this evening was carefully reviewed by the steering committee and presented to Richmond Advisory Plan Commission during their September and October meetings. The Plan Commission held a public hearing for the updated plan during their October 29th meeting. No one from the public spoke in favor or opposition to the plan during the public hearing, and the Plan Commission voted seven to zero to recommend of approval of the plan to council. And to that, I would like to welcome Rachel Christensen and Jennifer Barclay with HWC Engineering to give a presentation of the comprehensive plan update.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Rachel Christensen with HWC Engineering. I am the planning studio lead there. I've been with HWC for a little, around five years now, and was really excited when we had the opportunity to submit for and then got selected to do the city's comprehensive plan update. So tonight, what we are going to do, maybe, can you skip me ahead one? I thought I was working on. Actually, my clicker was off, so that was a technology fail on my part. Tonight, we're just going to do a brief overview of the comprehensive plan. We're going to tell you a little bit about the planning process that we went through to get to where we are today. We'll give you a community engagement overview, so all the parts and pieces that we pulled from the public to get to this final draft, and then just a general plan summary. My team, of course, like I said, my name's Rachel Christensen. Jennifer Barclay is here with me tonight. She was a project manager that helped lead this process. Reese Wimmer was a planner on our team that did a lot of the mapping and writing on this. And then we also have Brian Sheehan, which hopefully some of you are familiar with Mr. Sheehan. He is one of our business development leads and works really closely with Wayne County and City of Richmond on a variety of projects. So with that, I'm going to pass it off to Jen, and she will give you more details about the project.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you for having us. As Rachel said, we were excited to be able to work with you to update the comprehensive plan. Your comprehensive plan is really your long-range guide for growth in the community. It's what guides your Plan Commission that you work with in their decisions on rezoning, you know, different developments, things like that. There are legal requirements. We have to have objectives for future development, land use, and then public ways, public lands, and utilities. And the purpose is really understand where you're at today, so your current conditions, set a clear vision and goals for the future, and then actionable items that can be achieved in the next five to 10 years and beyond. So your last plan was adopted in 2019. You guys are right on schedule for updating the comprehensive plan. That's why we didn't do a full rewrite since you went through that process in 2019. Many of those goals were accomplished, so we worked through those, what had got done, what needs to still be addressed, and then maybe what are some new goals as things have changed since 2019. The plan, kept with the overall outline from your 2019 plan, included that introduction, which talked about project approach, the elements of the plan, the process and public engagements. The next chapter was laying the foundation, which really laid out your key challenges and introduced the goals. And then the next chapter was establishing that framework. That's where you see the vision, the framework for your goals, objectives, policy and programs, your future land use map and the typologies. And then the priority recommendations is something your old plan had, but these are all new recommendations with this document. So the planning process began last May. We met with the steering committee, which is a variety of people from the city of Richmond, but also within the community that are leaders in their different fields or experts, to help really guide that process. So they helped us determine what had been accomplished and what still needed to be done. We also held stakeholder meetings, and that's really focused conversations, again, with experts in different fields, and then a public workshop as well, where everyone was invited to come. We did release a public draft that was put on the website, the city's website, and invited public comments. We did the Plan Commission introduction in September, and then again, a public hearing in October, which you're legally obligated to have that public hearing prior to adoption. And then we're here tonight in November. So public engagement overview, as Lindsay said, this plan really built on a lot of your prior planning initiatives, including the Parks and Recreation Plan, the White Water Gorge Activation Plan, and you can see those numbers here about how many people participated throughout those processes. And we really gathered all that information along with our own stakeholder meetings and public workshop as well. So just for this process, we have the four steering committee meetings. Before you and Plan Commission, we will appear three times. Stakeholders, there were 23 people who participated and 13 at the public meetings. So an overview of what changed and what stayed the same. So the vision statement was slightly updated along with goal statements, the future land use map, and the critical path strategies was completely rewritten. What stayed the same is that regulatory framework and key challenges, but we did update new statistics in the data. So your vision statement is the city of Richmond is revitalizing, becoming a vibrant community where there are opportunities for education, entertainment, and employment. Richmond's growing quality of life stems from its diverse people, supportive environment, welcoming neighborhoods, and cultural amenities. The regulatory framework, you might recognize these because the overall stayed the same, is that grow, connect, protect, and celebrate, which you saw in that 2019 plan. The goal statements, we retired two goals of community identity, since it had been accomplished, and economic and workforce development, which those particular objectives under that have been accomplished. The two new goals were economic development and quality of life. And these are your goal statements here, which I invite you to look at in more detail in the overall plan. Then these are the new critical path strategies. You'll see there are seven there, all connected back to your connects, grow, I forget, let's see, connects, grow, protects, and celebrate. The future land use map was updated. Those are the notable areas. Let's go to the map here. So there was an urban edge that we added along the Fifth Street corridor. We expanded the industrial area in the northwest portion of the city. We expanded traditional neighborhood in the southwest portion of the city, and then expanded commercial and traditional neighborhood in the southwest portion of the city. So those are the overall updates to the land use map. As Lindsay said, the Plan Commission did recommend approval, and if with that, we'll take any questions.
Thank you. Questions from council at this time for Lindsay, Rachel, or Jennifer?
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
So these are the goals. How, what are you going to use to measure these goals? So for example, celebrate administrative processes and procedures, improve [bell dings] government efficiencies through the use of modern technology by delivering consistent enforcement process, transparent, frequent communication, and opportunities for collaboration among entities, agencies, and/or organizations. So just using that one as an example, what are the measuring sticks for these?
So each one have their own measuring sticks, objectives, policy, and programs that are detailed out in the plan.
Is it not in here?
Not in there?
Well, I was asking. I don't know.
Okay. So for that one in particular, just working on implementing some programs within the website, that communication, I believe, is what you were talking about there.
I just use that as an example, like how to measure celebrating.
Mm-hmm. That one's a little harder.
Yeah, so I just, I mean, in my opinion, in order to achieve the goals, you have to measure them.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, some of those are a little more, I would call, gray to be able to measure. It's hard to say, hey, we celebrated enough. I don't know if there ever will be. But I think implementing different programs along the way, seeing how your community responds to that, which we give some different suggestions on things to try.
And who is the body in which is measuring that?
I would say all of the city leadership measures that. The group that's really in charge of implementing that is your Plan Commission, because this is where it sits, but obviously you govern that as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I do want to just add to that, too, that there are, within those chapters, there are strategies that come with that. So that is one way to measure it, too, is that if you're checking off the list of strategies that have been identified, that that's one way of doing it. And I think, you know, looking at where, if you guys had this plan done in 2019 and now we're at 2025, there were a lot of things that you guys checked off the list from that 2019 plan, and which is why you're here for that update. So that's one way of measuring it, too.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Additional questions, comments? I have one. The Northwest Fifth Street, would you expand on that? That, I think you called it an urban mixed use?
Mm-hmm. Expanding that along the Fifth Street corridor?
Yes.
Yep. So that area along the corridor was identified as there were quite a bit of different uses in that area. So that urban mix, it allows for that mix of commercial, residential within that corridor itself. So it existed at certain intersections, but we expanded it along the whole corridor.
And does that, does that looked upon as a good thing or a bad thing?
It was the recommendation to go ahead and expand that all the way along the corridor from the group that we worked with.
From 70 to 40, or what?
It doesn't go all the way up to 70. It comes down, it's really at 40, and then extends about halfway up into 70, which you'll see today, your current land uses are mixed along there as well. So it further supports that mix.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President.
Sir.
For several years, we've talked about upgrading the 35 corridor, recognizing it's the gateway to the city, particularly for Earlham Associated Folk. And so this is a step in the direction of trying to find some particular things that we can do to make that happen.
Okay. Any additional questions or comments? Thank you, ladies.
Yeah, thank you.
It is council's pleasure on resolution seven, 2025.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I move to approve resolution seven, 2025.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve resolution seven, 2025. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. In addition to that, I'd like we to stay after, because we all need to sign this resolution, I believe.
Remember.
Thank you.
Yep, you do.
Resolution number eight, please.
Resolution number eight, a resolution supporting the adoption of a food and beverage tax pursuant to Indiana Code six dash nine dash six four dash three.
Mr. Engel.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I want to thank all my fellow council members for their work for the city at this difficult time in our history. In the months ahead, we will be faced with the task of rightsizing our city government in an effort, an effort that has begun this year, and we will succeed. But we cannot forget about our commitment to our citizens, and that includes providing clean, safe, up-to-date parks for them to enjoy. I believe we have a strong, vital, thriving system of parks, and one that we can be proud of, but we must continue that commitment to parks. That is why tonight I'm asking you on council to consider a resolution in support of instituting a food and beverage tax in our city. It is a 1% tax on all prepared food and is estimated to bring in more than $1 million each year strictly for projects in our parks. To begin this project, I have organized a committee of council members, including Mr. Goss, Ms. Bumbleau, and Mr. Burkhart, plus two members of the Park Board, Mike Devine and Dakota Collins, to begin the work and bring this resolution to you tonight. As you might know, the legislation allowing us to seek a food and beverage tax gives council the final approval of expenditures on projects in this, for this project. And this is a user tax and one that is project-oriented. It is a tax on prepared food, not groceries, and the money is earmarked for parks, trails, and the gorge project. If you go out to eat, you will pay this tax. If you go to the grocery store, you will not pay this tax. If we pass the resolution tonight, we will bring an ordinance back to council in December, and at that time, hopefully, we'll set a special meeting where the food and beverage tax will be the only thing on the agenda. The ordinance can be approved that night or can be held. And now I would ask that Park Superintendent Denise Retsch come up and give a brief presentation on the food and beverage tax.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Before we begin, is there any questions of Mr. Engel? Hearing none?
Thank you. Denise Retsch, Park Superintendent, thank you for having me, and I do want to echo Bill and his, I want to thank him for his leadership on this. He has done a phenomenal job leading this effort and gathering and presenting, and he's been with me on a number of presentations, as has the rest of the advisory team on multiple presentations. So I do want to thank all of you for your time and for your support, Mr. Goss, Ms. Bumbleau, Mr. Burkhart, and especially Mr. Engel. Thank you so much. As you know, Mr. Engel does serve as our liaison for the Park Board. He has been a part of the Park Board and seen kind of our ebbs and flows and kind of knows what's happening here and there, and so he took the step to lead this effort, and we really do appreciate it. So I'll turn your attention to the screen here. I'll take it, please. And so we do have a brief presentation, as the advisory team did ask for me to go over some of the projects with you, and I'm happy to field any questions that I can, and also the advisory team can also help with those. But we just want to highlight that it only takes one, building places that bring us together. What we like to call the Fab A Team, the Food and Beverage Advisory Team. As you know, these are the people who served on that A Team, and the administration also helped as well. We did have the mayor, the controller, and the director of strategic initiatives, all as a part, that did play a role in some of the information that was needed and questions that were asked during the A Team's requests. I did want to highlight, of course, a article that was done June 7th, 2015, by yours truly, Mr. Engel here. When he was writing for the pladium item, you'll see Richmond Parks showing signs of neglect, and, you know, we're not willing to go backwards, only willing to take steps in the right direction. And one of the main reasons why Bill sits here today and also sits on the Park Board, and also this was important to him, and he talks about that quite a lot when we're in these presentations, and I don't think anyone wants to see our parks going in a backwards direction. And I know that this is one of the reasons why I stepped up when I stepped up to be the Park Superintendent, so I'm not interested in going backwards at all. Our parks are the heart of our community, where families gather, memories are made, and Richmond's story continues to grow. It only takes one person, one moment, and one opportunity to make a difference in our community's parks and trail systems. 1%. This new 1% food and beverage tax will support our future goals of providing active spaces, accessible trail systems, and unique regional destinations. We put the projects into three pillars, or three buckets, if you will, sustain what we have, make necessary improvements, and create new destinations. When we talk about sustaining what we have, this is taking care of the essentials that keep our parks and public spaces thriving and sustainable. And everyone is talking about the Glenn Miller Park and the pond dredging. You're hearing that a lot, and the last time that the pond was dredged was 1972. And the pond dredging will remove years of buildup sediment to restore clean water, healthy habitats, and lasting beauty. This work will help protect the ponds so future generations can enjoy it here at Glenn Miller. So that's one of the priority projects we have in our list. Trail improvements. We have several trails in six areas, and this does not count the Glenn Miller Golf Course Trail, the paved trail. We want to continue to repair and improve along these eight miles of trails within our parks, because these are important. Equipment repairs. You'll know that Highland Lake Golf Course is in need of repairing and upgrading and modernizing our systems and our equipment to ensure that our entire department is efficient and safe, but this, here at Highland Lake, you can see our pump system is a little out of date. We definitely need some upgrading here. Roof repairs. We've assessed most of our properties. Over 12 roofs across the system are in need of repairs and replacements. Capital facility repairs. This is just highlighting the Charles House, but we do need to address ongoing maintenance repairs and purchase to overcome deferred maintenance items that have been identified in the last five years. The next bucket, making necessary improvements. This is creating vibrant, family-friendly spaces that invite joy and connection. So Glenn Miller Park, the E.G. Hill Fountain, we're working on a project right now to restore this fountain. The rest of the historic area is definitely in need of preservation for future enjoyment. The Highland Lake Golf Course, we are needing to create opportunities for year-round use, new play experience, and increased revenues. And as you know, and I put in your folder, a list of all of the high schools and the colleges who play at Glenn Miller, I mean, at Highland Lake, and also we have people who play at Glenn Miller, as well as the training facility. But we do have a lot of high schools who utilize this area and who would really take advantage of the simulator area for year-round use and year-round practice as well. Glenn Miller Park, we need some playground improvements here, not just improvements, but a new playground. This playground was from the bond in 1999, and in your folder that I gave you, you'll see the bonds that we did and in the amounts of the bonds that we've done. So you see that we did a bond in 1999, a bond in 2009, and then another bond in 2019. So those are the bonds, the most recent bonds, and how much they were for, and the ordinances in case you need to go back and reference those bonds. But Glenn Miller is now, believe it or not, our oldest playground that we have in our park system, and it's fading fast. It gets a tremendous amount of use, and we love that. It's one of our largest playgrounds, but it's our flagship park, and it deserves to have a flagship playground. Same thing with our splash pad. It was the same, it came in at the same year. So we are in need of getting a new splash pad as well. We talk about signage. We talk about signage that needs to be done park-wide. Providing modernized signage for parks, this is something we heard a lot of in our master plan, some gateway signage, some entrance signage, some wayfinding signage. All of those things were identified in our master plan, that community-driven master plan back in 2020. Amenities. As you can see, we have less-than-pleasing trash cans and picnic tables that are definitely in need of some new amenities park-wide. And sometimes these trash cans, believe it or not, create more work for us because of the critters that like to get in there and get out the trash, and then it blows all over the parks. So we really just need to look at new trash can opportunities and then be able to have those so that we can also save time and energy as well. The third bucket here, create new destinations. Investing in the gorge to honor our music legacy, create new spaces for community events, and attract visitation. Starganet Plaza and venue updates. A lot of you have heard about the Whitewater Gorge. I've been here talking about that. You've heard a lot about the gorge and the shovel-ready projects that we have going on. But this is providing communal spaces that showcase and preserve our history while focusing on increasing event opportunities through performance, event, and winterization needs. A lot of people do utilize this venue, and a lot more would utilize it if we had it winterized properly. So those are things that we're very excited about doing and getting done in the future. The outdoor amphitheater, this is something that we have in the plans that will be shovel-ready as well in Phase Three. It's already being designed, and also we're working through that effort. So creating a larger event space that will provide new opportunities for community gathering, focusing on arts and cultural experiences for all. This area will be designed to accommodate over 2,000. And I just put this on here for a capacity comparison. You know, we look at Elstro and Glenn Miller and some of the Whitewater State Park Celebration Plaza. And I just put this on here for a capacity comparison. You know, we look at Elstro and Glenn Miller and some of the Whitewater State Park Celebration Plaza and the State Park Amphitheater, and how that compares, it just shows that the 2,000 that we would be able to seat would also compare to some of the larger cities. These projects represent more than improvements. They're an investment in community pride, family experiences, and Richmond's future. And, you know, just to kind of put this into perspective, the original legislation was approved in 2005. Assuming we would have enacted this in 2006 and a conservative amount of 1.5 million year received, 30 million in lost revenue would have been that we would have generated. So just putting that in perspective, if it's not now, then when is the right time? These upcoming projects focus on recreation, restoration, and renewal, all designed to make our parks stronger, more beautiful, and ready for generations to come. We've talked a little bit about the timeline. Mr. Engel put that in front of you. You understand the timeline. And if council's pleasure is to move forward, then obviously we can go forward with that timeline. Mr. Engel also talked about groceries will not be taxed. What's included are things served that is either at the deli counter, grocery store, things like that, that are already prepared foods. So remember that. Things that, you know, you're eating with a utensil, catering options, things like that. Those are things that are going to be included. Transactions not subject to tax are the sale of food that is only cut, repackaged, or pasteurized by the seller. So we can do this together. We can go forward. You know, I was told to, you know, prepare this, prepare some projects, which these projects are the projects that the community has talked about for years, and we're getting to those. So we've talked through priority projects and the trust that we want the community to see. We also talked about the fact that this is city-oriented only, so the tax will be coming from the city, not the county. We also talked through the fact that, you know, this is not something where, you know, I'm going to be getting a $300,000 raise from this, you know? This is just some of the misconceptions that you hear, obviously, where people think that, you know, this food and beverage does some things. But, you know, we've been doing a lot of presentations. We've been out there talking and getting feedback from people, and most people are very supportive of this and just really want to support their park system. You know, we've worked really hard to do what we can with the resources that we have. And, you know, we've been talking about this community master plan since 2020 and that, you know, we're going to implement these projects. And we told the community we would, and now's our time to do it. We'd need that influx of cash to be able to bond and have a repayment source to do so. There's not another way. And so talking through those things and making sure that I can answer any other questions that you all might have. I know you have some other questions that you'd like to ask, and I'm sure that I didn't cover everything, but I'm also available to talk through the process. I know everyone on the Fab A Team also has been, you know, in this for a while and knows a lot about it and has been asking a lot of questions just like me. I've been reaching out to the Department of Revenue, who have given us bulletins and also guides to be able to give out, which we've been doing, and they're also in your folder up there. So we're happy to bring those to people and send those out. The Chamber's been really gracious enough to be able to say that they will also help with some FAQs to businesses and things like that when we need to do that. So lots of support out there, really happy about that. And again, I'd love to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Questions from council? Comments?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I too want to thank Bill. You did a great job spearheading this. Counselor Goss and also Bumbalo. I served on the committee as well. And we all know that things changed a little bit with Senate Bill 1. And I know a lot of people are like, taxes are bad. And taxes are bad. They do hurt. And no one wants to bring forth and implement a new tax. But in my opinion, I see we've got two choices. We can do this, or we can sit around on social media and talk about how things are decaying and not providing any solutions. So, you know, as the media has talked about, there have been cuts, hiring freeze, et cetera, throughout the city. All these projects will come before the council to talk about and discuss. So there is oversight. We can't look back at 2005. We can't look back and say what this could have been. But I think we have a decision right now. And the decision is, what do we think about the pride of our city and the future of our city? There was an article about 7,500 people were leaving Richmond in the next 10 years or whatever. In my opinion, we need to make it really hard for that to be possible. And, you know, I think that it starts here by not sitting on your hands and doing something about it. And this team did a lot, and this council will be in charge of a lot moving forward. So I just wanted to thank you, and I'm very supportive of making Richmond a better place and by that, through parks. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional comments?
Mr. President.
Mr. Purcell.
I would also like to thank the team for working so diligently on this. And I want to reiterate that the state is moving the taxing process down to the city level in many areas. And to just say that because we're this party or we're this group, that we shouldn't be supporting new taxes doesn't work in the current environment and the latest legislation, in my opinion. I did promise to ask questions tonight with followers of my council page. And I know this is a little bit redundant, but I'm going to ask them if I may. How do we plan to maintain budget-wise build-outs or do projects long-term?
Well, and like we talked about in finance, and we talked a little bit about before, you know, most of these projects, and you have a list of the projects in your folder as well, and the ones that we went over here, we're not expanding. The majority of them, we're just replacing. Currently, we're really chasing our tails with aging infrastructure and deferred maintenance, and this is going to help tremendously.
You just touched on maintenance, and that was one of the questions that's been asked today to define maintenance. I'm not going to ask you to define that. But what has been clarified, I'd like to state to those who have asked me that question today, that the definition of maintenance is pretty loose here. Projects are projects. If it's a roof project, you could call it maintenance, or you can call it a roof project, it sounds like to me from your explanation. So this will, and that was the concern, is the deteriorated state currently of our parks and getting those things repaired and brought back to the beauty that is possible there. Another question is, do we have to bond the projects, or can we build a reserve fund and pay cash for projects? And the reason I ask this, and you've already answered it, but I will ask it publicly. I have a problem with paying interest with tax dollars for projects, which we have to do when we do TIF bond issues.
And I think that that's a really good question, and that's one that the council's going to have to determine, how you want the projects done. The A Team has really talked about wanting most of these projects done pretty quickly and at least some of these projects done right away because they are priority projects. So I think that's the council question. It's going to go back to council to decide, you know, is this a bond that you'd like to do and get some of these projects knocked out in three years and continue to build a reserve at the same time? Or is it council's pleasure to just keep building a reserve and wait until that reserve gets high enough so you can pay cash for everything you do? And then you'll have to tell the community that you're just waiting for that reserve to be built long enough, and then that's when we're going to wait for those projects to be done. So I think that's a council question, and it depends on how quickly you want some of these projects to be done.
I'll ask my final question, and that is, and you've already answered part of it. Can these funds be used to offset current projected cost, freeing up more maintenance monies? I have these and other concerns as we move forward. I do want your input and thoughts. We need to consider being a community that has a variety of experiences available on one hand, but we also need to catch up on the crumbling infrastructure and blight to make our community as good as it can be.
Yeah, and is that a question to me? Sorry.
It's more of a statement.
Okay.
In fact, you've already answered the question.
And I think that, you know, when we talk about the current projects and freeing up any money, we don't have capital money in our budget. I don't foresee it coming back anytime before 2028, maybe even 2029. I see budget cuts coming again in 2027, 2028 due to Senate Bill 1. So I don't see any capitals being put in your park's budget. Again, this is, you know, a budget that council oversees. So this is not going to be for operational purposes. Obviously, this particular food and beverage would not be for operational purposes, but council does have the say in what this particular food and beverage is put forth for, and so you will determine those capitals.
Thank you.
Thank you. What is council's pleasure for ordinance, excuse me, Resolution Number 8, 2025?
I move to approve it.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 8, 2025. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carried. Thank you. Communications from the mayor.
Good evening, Mr. President and rest of council. Just a couple of quick notes. Earlier today, we hosted about a half dozen, oops, it's not showing, standby. TV wants that, don't they? Give me a minute. Dump me out. All right, back to the top. Earlier today, we hosted about a half dozen East Central Indiana mayors for Ames Regional Conversations, What's Next for City and Towns following SCA 1. Ours was the first stop of the day. They're hitting two other cities today around Indiana. They're doing it all throughout the last couple of weeks, the next few weeks, up until the next legislative session starts. So they're listening to mayors, they're listening to what we've done to our budget to respond to SCA 1, and they're taking all these notes together and coming up with some ideas on how we can approach the state legislators next year on changing some of these things that had some unintended consequences. They're not going to put the money back in the budget, but some of the rules have some unintended consequences in the future. That was good. This Thursday at noon, there's a reveal of a Starganet historical marker on that site, a reminder that City Hall is closed next week, Thursday and Friday, for the Thanksgiving break. And following that, Shop Small Saturday follows on Saturday, the 29th. And if you want more information on Shop Small Saturday, I'll let you go to the Chamber website or follow them on social media of all the things that are happening then. Should be a good time. That's about it.
Questions for the mayor?
Mr. President.
Mr. Purcell.
First of all, I'll go through you on this request publicly. And the budget transfer request at our special meeting on October 30, 2025, Ordinance 47, 2025, was an appropriation ordinance submitting the 2025 budget using opioid funds in the amount of $576,078. Council was told that there was a calculated and justified by direct accounting of time, et cetera. I am requesting that accounting documentation. That's question number one of you, Mr. Mayor. Question number two is, is I've made several requests for information about city catering beginning over one year ago. I have requested this information from the purchasing department. I was told that you had the information and that they had collected, and I had to come to you for that information. You have denied me this information on multiple occasions. Are you prepared to give me these documents at this time?
Mr. President, some information found in that would be embarrassing to the former fire chief. That's why we withheld it. Some of it had to do with his demotion in 2022 in the Human Resources Files and Finance. So I don't want to share with council. I don't want to share it publicly. I'll share it with him. But here's the problem we have, Mr. President. So he's asking about catering, who we choose catering and why we choose catering. And Mr. Purcell has, for a long period of time, had all these conspiracy theories about things that are happening within a city that are absolutely false. And I want to read into the record a text message he sent me late Saturday night while I was at a community event, just to give you an idea where some of this stuff is coming from. So the text message he sent reads, "I'm simply going to go to the bottom line, Ron. Richmond rumor is that Hilliard," meaning Kathy and Tellurian Hilliard, "and this group has something over you. Your seeming lack of oversight only lacks to reinforce that talk. Councilman Jerry Purcell." So his insistence on social media and even text messages, I mean, other messages, me, all these conspiracy theories are unfounded. But if it is a majority vote of council, we'll spend time and go through even this year and look at all the money we spent on catering and who we spent on catering with. And that should probably include Richmond Power and Light because we pay those bills too. Our controller signs those checks too. So if council wants me to spend time, have finance, spend time finding about all the catering money we spent, we can do that. But I want not just one person with conspiracy-minded, but all of council to make that request, for them to take time from their busy schedule to look all this up, create a report. This is an issue, yes.
Comments from council? I will poll the members of council to find out whether or not they want you to do that, and then I'll report back to you.
Because it'll take some time, yes.
Mr. President.
Mr. Purcell.
Yes, I would request an executive session so we aren't finishing this discussion in public.
I'm not sure we can have an executive session over that. It's not a personnel manager. But I'll refer that to AJ.
The mayor is saying it was a personnel issue.
I will need to look at the statute to make a determination as to whether or not that would fit any of the sub-prongs, but nothing pops out of my mind as I sit here, but I can take a closer look, Mr. President.
Okay. Any additional comments or questions? I'll poll the council to see their pleasure, which what they like to do.
Okay. Thank you.
Board of Public Works and Safety, October 30 and November 6 are in your brackets. Do you have any questions or comments? Hearing none. We have reports from department heads, standing committees. I don't believe we have any. Request from Wayne County Tourism Bureau, approval of three board members, Sam Patel, Pamela Boring, and Dana Weigle. And this is our, or what we do.
Normal practice.
Our normal practice, I guess, is best to hold this, and if anybody has any questions or comments or anybody else they'd like to nominate, please bring it forward at our next meeting. If not, we'll vote on these three people. Street Treat Commission, approval of Howard Price as a new member, three-year term from November 24, '25 to November 26, 2028. We'll do that, our practice is to hold it until the next meeting, and if anyone else has someone that they would like to enter, we'll entertain that at that time. Is there any miscellaneous business to come before council at this time? Hearing none. Ordinances on first reading.
Mr. President, I move to suspend the rules and read Ordinance 55, 2025, and 56, 2025 by title only.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and read Ordinance 55, 2025, and 56, 2025 by title only. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Ordinance Number 55, 2025, an appropriation ordinance authorizing the submission, acceptance, and appropriation of a grant from the Patrick Lee Bulletproof Vest Partnership. Vest Partnership.
Counsel. Kyle Weatherly, Richmond Police Department. Audrey wasn't able to make it tonight. She had some things come up, so I'm going to go ahead and present to you. Ordinance Fifty-five, 2025 is an appropriation ordinance authorizing the submittal, acceptance, appropriation of a grant from U.S. Department of Justice. Richmond Police Department is requesting $7,125 for the purchase of 15 bulletproof vests through the United States Department of Justice, Patrick Leahy Bulletproof Vest Partnership Program. This grant requires a 50% match will be provided from the budgeted police funds. Deadline to submit the application is December 19th, 2025. So she added in there that if you have any questions, you can contact her. So upon my arrival today, which I was aware that the ordinance read that it was coming out of the 2025 budget, it should have read that it was coming out of the '26 budget. So it's my understanding that it's going to be tabled for the time being, which I'm okay with, so that correction can be made.
Any comments or questions from council?
Just procedurally, that could be amended this evening if council.
Pardon me?
That could be amended this evening if council so chooses, or if it wants to wait.
I'd like to go ahead and amend it this evening. So moved.
Second.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I have a question. We discussed this at Finance Committee. So we had talked about this. I had asked Tracy Beth about the 50% local match, and at the time of the meeting, they had talked about how this was coming from the general fund, and that at that point in time, they had looked down through some of the police funds, donation police funds and things like that, and there wasn't one that was reflected this evening.
Okay, but we can still go ahead and amend this to say the '26 budget, and they can see if they can find any monies and come back to the committee so you can review it again. Isn't that correct?
I believe that to be correct, yeah.
I'd like to amend it, and we already have the motion and a second on that. All in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Amended, and it will be referred to the Finance Committee.
Ordinance Number Fifty-six, 2025, an appropriation ordinance authorizing the submittal, acceptance, and appropriation of a grant from the Partnership for a Drug-Free Wayne County.
Who is going to speak to this ordinance? Hearing no one, it will be tabled.
Ordinances on second reading?
Yes, please.
Ordinance Number Forty, 2025, an appropriation ordinance fixing the annual compensation of all elected city officers for 2026.
The Finance Committee has reviewed all of these ordinances, Forty, Forty-one, Forty-two, Forty-three, and Forty-four, and has recommended passage on all of them except on Forty-two, 2025, correct?
That's correct, because the city of Richmond has not responded back, and the union has not been engaged in any final discussion. So I think it would be inappropriate to vote to pass this ahead of that.
On Ordinance Forty-two, we will hold that one for this evening, but the other ordinances can be passed at this time. So ordinance Number Forty.
Already read at once.
Any comments or questions on Ordinance Number Forty before we go to the public? Hearing none. Ordinance Number Forty, 2025 is on second reading, which is public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Anyone like to speak in opposition? Was it council's pleasure?
Move for engrossment.
Second.
Have a motion and second to engross. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Call the question.
Second.
Have a motion and second to call the question. Would the clerk please call the question?
Doug Goss?
Aye.
Lucinda Wright?
Aye.
Bill Engel?
Aye.
Ann Taylor?
Aye.
Gary Turner?
Aye.
Jane Bumbalo?
Aye.
Justin Burkhart?
Aye.
Jerry Purcell?
Aye.
Larry Parker?
Aye.
All are in favor?
Thank you. Motion carried.
Amended Ordinance Number Forty-one, 2025, an appropriation ordinance to be known as the 2026 Salary Ordinance.
Comments or questions from council before we go to the public? Ordinance Number Forty-one, 2025 is on second reading, which is public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Is there anybody in the ordinance, anybody in the audience like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Hearing none?
Engrossment?
Second.
Have a motion and second to engross. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I would like to read a statement, if this is okay at this time, on?
Sure.
Ordinance Forty-one. Thank you. Ordinance Forty-one, 2025, first of all, I want to clarify that council, through the Finance Committee, set a goal of a balanced budget due to necessity. In a compromise, it was determined that it would take three years to meet that needed goal. The administration has determined how to begin to meet the goal, starting in 2026. This is part of the modifications to this ordinance. This should clear up the information on the Board of Works Facebook page that council did not lay off or fire 21 employees. Thank you.
Any additional comments or questions? It's council's pleasure.
Ms. President?
Yes.
Do we have a Board of Works Facebook page?
I'm sorry?
Do we have a Board of Works Facebook page?
Not that I'm aware of.
No, not either. I was just curious if I was missing something. It should be on the city's website. I would think it was. That would be linked. Thank you. Okay.
All pictures are on the city website.
It's council's pleasure.
Didn't we call the question?
No, not yet.
Oh, I called it.
Second.
Call it, Gary.
All the questions and second, please call the rule.
Doug Goss?
Aye.
Lucinda Wright?
Aye.
Bill Engel?
Aye.
Ann Taylor?
Aye.
Gary Turner?
Aye.
Jane Bumbalo?
Aye.
Justin Burkhart?
Aye.
Jerry Purcell?
Aye.
Larry Parker?
Aye.
All are in favor?
Motion carried. Ordinance Forty-two will be held. Ordinance Forty-three?
Ordinance Number Forty-three, 2025, an appropriation ordinance to be known as the Sanitary District 2026 Salary Ordinance.
Comments or questions from council? Ordinance Number Forty-three is on second reading, which is public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Is there anyone in the audience like to speak in opposition?
Move for engrossment.
Second.
Have a motion and second to engross. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Call the question.
Second.
Motion and second to call the question. Please call the rule.
Doug Goss?
Aye.
Lucinda Wright?
Aye.
Bill Engel?
Aye.
Ann Taylor?
Aye.
Gary Turner?
Aye.
Jane Bumbalo?
Aye.
Justin Burkhart?
Aye.
Jerry Purcell?
Aye.
Larry Parker?
Aye.
All are in favor?
Motion carried.
Ordinance Number Forty-four, 2025, an ordinance authorizing the annual compensation of Richmond firefighters.
I'll answer questions from council. Ordinance Forty-four, 2025 is on second reading, which is public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who want to speak in favor of this ordinance? Is there anyone in the audience like to speak in opposition?
Move for engrossment.
Second.
Have a motion and second to engross. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Call the question.
Motion carried.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to call the question. Please call the rule.
Doug Goss?
Aye.
Lucinda Wright?
Aye.
Bill Engel?
Aye.
Ann Taylor?
Aye.
Gary Turner?
Aye.
Jane Bumbalo?
Aye.
Justin Burkhart?
Aye.
Jerry Purcell?
Aye.
Larry Parker?
Aye.
All are in favor?
Motion passed.
Are the signature sheets for the resolutions in this pile?
They're with the resolution. There's only one resolution that needs updating.
Is there any unfinished business to come before the council at this time?
Move for adjournment.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Don't forget to sign for this one resolution.